Mr. DiMartini, Mr. Casey, to start us off. On our two-year financial plan. There you are. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, and I am the city's finance director, and it is my pleasure today to present a very high-level overview of the city administrators' recommended fiscal year 2022 and 2023 budget for the city of Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. The agenda for today's presentation is to provide a very high-level overview of the proposed budget, including the major work efforts that are included as priorities in the budget. I'll provide a general fund recap and an outlook as to what's been included in the proposed budget for the two fiscal years. Also provide a very high-level overview about what the City Council can expect to hear in the coming months in regards to the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. I will also provide a detailed listing of all of the budget review calendar items, when the public can anticipate hearing about budget-related items at both the Finance Committee and also at the Greater City Council, and then staff would be more than happy to take your questions and hear a discussion. Next slide, please. The city has posted the proposed budget on the city's website, so members of the public can access the very detailed budget book at www.santabarbara.ca.gov/budget. The document has been posted as of 2:00 this afternoon, and it is available for public access. Next slide, please. So now I just want to give a very high-level overview of the budget and talk about some of the major work efforts next. Next slide, please. The preparation of and the timeline that dictates when the city issues its budget is documented in the city's charter. The city's charter does say that the budget must be submitted no later than 60 days prior to July 1st, July 1st being the first day of each fiscal year. And so that date falls on today, which gives around 60 days, a little bit more, on this fiscal year, where the City Council will be able to hear presentations from staff about what is included in the proposed budget, and then give you an opportunity to deliberate and provide your final recommendations. This is the first year of this budget cycle. Council may recall that the city prepares a two-year financial plan. This first year, the fiscal year 2022, is the first year of the financial plan, where it's the operating budget and the capital budget for fiscal year '22. Next slide, please. The budget document that you receive today is a very long, extensive document. There is a great deal of information in there that staff believe is important and vital for the City Council to receive and to review and to ask questions of and discuss with staff to make the best decision possible about the use of our financial resources. You'll find that there is an overview budget message at the very beginning of the budget book from the city administrator, which outlines many of the major assumptions and priorities in the proposed budget, as well as some of the major work efforts that have been included and funded in that budget as well. You will see a number of summary schedules in regards to our revenues and expenditures, positions, capital projects, other projects as well, and there will be a two-year plan document for each department. Each department has a section in the budget book detailing all of the specific priorities and financial considerations for each department by which they will operate. All that information you'll be able to find in the budget book itself. Next slide, please. May come as no surprise in conversations we've been having with you as of late during our financial quarterly projections and other presentations, the city is still encountering impacts, economic impacts related to COVID-19. There continues to be a great deal of economic uncertainty in regards to the city's revenue sources in our budget that directly impacts our ability to continue to deliver services. Since COVID began, just a little over a year ago, the city is projected to realize approximately $35 million less revenue by the end of the current fiscal year. It's a significant revenue loss across all of the city's funds. In order to balance the budget over the past couple of years, to sort of account for that revenue, to account for that impact, the city has needed to reduce our expenditures, and has also needed to dip in to the general fund reserves in order to balance the budget, both in the current fiscal year and what is being projected in next fiscal year. The city has been able to replenish those reserves over the past 10 years following the Great Recession, and it's a really good thing that the city has prioritized at the City Council's direction replenishing those reserves, because those reserves were used and are planned to continue to be used in the current fiscal year and next fiscal year in order to balance. The contingency reserve is projected to largely be depleted by the end of fiscal year '21. In fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, it is still projected this time to dip into those reserves at a very modest level. It's important to note here that the recently approved American Rescue Plan Act that was signed by President Biden last month will offer some relief to the city of Santa Barbara. In that $1.9 trillion relief package, there is just over $22 million that is being allocated to the city of Santa Barbara, and that will be over the course of a year. So around $11 million of that will be received next month in May of 2021. And next week, staff will be bringing an item to the Finance Committee to receive a presentation in regards to the overview of that relief package and to hear staff's recommendation about how those funds can be used and receive direction, and that will come to the City Council at a later time. But that relief package is meant to offset the significant loss of revenue that the city has already lost, and the amount of money that the city will be getting in that relief package is far less than the total of the $35 million that the city is projected to lose. Next slide, please. This slide here summarizes by fund and by revenue source, the lost revenue that staff is projecting from when COVID began to the end of the current fiscal year. And as you can see, in total, it's approximately $35 million. The revenue sources that the city has felt the most significant impact is in the general fund in both transient occupancy tax and sales tax, again, which comes as no surprise. The retail industry and the hotel industry has been hit very, very hard and significantly with the various stay-at-home orders and the reduced economic activity in the greater Santa Barbara area. So those revenue sources have seen significant decline in revenue. You'll see our departmental revenues as well. The city has either had to cancel or delay many of the programs offered in both recreation and parks and many other departments. Downtown parking had a significant loss of revenue as well from a significantly less volume of parking activity going on in our city's parking lots, and then the waterfront as well with pressure on lease payments and parking revenue as well. Next slide, please. The recommended budget also articulates, particularly in the budget message itself, many of the major work efforts that even though there are limited resources, the city administrators' recommended budget includes funding for many critical projects that the City Council has articulated to us over the past few months that they want funded in the proposed budget. And this list here just includes a very short list of some of those priority projects. It includes restoring economic vitality citywide following sort of the impacts of post-COVID and how the city continues to support our retail and other economic activities citywide. It will be prioritizing funding for the new police station. The Finance Committee just heard a presentation in regards to the rate setting for the Community Choice Energy Program, which is scheduled to go live at the early part of fiscal year 2022. The city continues to program its Measure C capital project funding to prioritize the investments and maintenance of many of the city's critical capital infrastructure facilities. There will also be funding for a state street master planning process that has just recently begun, and then also funding for the Delegara Plaza project to revitalize that area. And then also, construction is scheduled to begin in the Library Plaza in the next number of months. And there are many, many more priority projects and initiatives that staff are very excited to talk to the City Council about in the coming months during many of the budget presentations that will be coming. Next slide, please. So now I'd just like to give a few slides of a high-level overview of the major considerations and trends in the general fund. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a high-level overview of the multi-year forecast process that staff produced in conjunction with this budget. Council may recall that we held a very detailed work session with you back in February, where we spent a great deal of time talking about the general fund revenue sources and expenditures and our forecast assumptions. This model has continued to be updated throughout the past number of months as we developed our budget. It shows in the gray bars what the projected ending fund balance is projected to be in the general fund over the course of the next few years. The red bar shows our expenditures, and the green dotted line shows our revenues. As you can see, over the past two years and being projected in the next two fiscal years and beyond, the expenditures are greater than our revenues. So we continue to grapple with a structural budget deficit, requiring a minimal use of reserves, and continuing to control our expenditures in order to balance the budget. So we continue to have some challenges ahead, but staff will be presenting ways in which we've balanced the budget. I'll provide an overview of that today, and we'll go into that in a great level of detail over the coming months. Next slide, please. This slide shows a high-level overview in the general fund of our revenues being projected, both in the current fiscal year and the prior two fiscal years, and in the budget years, and the expenditures, and what the projected deficit is projected to be in that timeframe. During the quarter-two financial projection report, which was recently updated back in February, we indicated to the City Council that the most current projection for the deficit in this current fiscal year is approximately $7 million, which effectively will reduce our contingency reserves down to close to nothing, really only leaving disaster reserves. In the next fiscal year's budget, fiscal year '22, we are balancing the budget by controlling expenditures significantly, but also requiring a very minimal and modest use of reserves, which really is a positive sign, looking at the budget in totality, because staff continues to control expenditures to the best of our ability, holding positions vacant and such, and continuing to look very closely at our revenue sources to be very realistic about what we can expect to achieve, and all at the same time not having to lay off staff and continuing to work with our bargaining units. So the strategic leveraging of a very minimal amount of reserves is being projected and proposed here, which is a sign of us getting out of this post-COVID uncertainty that we're in, moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. This is a very high-level outlook of our general fund, both on the revenues and the expenditure side. As I mentioned earlier, sales tax and transient occupancy tax took the most significant hit during COVID. TOT is likely to rebound quicker than a sales tax will. Staff believes in working and taking in a lot of great economic forecasting information that the hotel industry is likely to rebound fairly quickly due to a lot of pent-up demand for travel, particularly for those folks that don't feel comfortable yet for flying. Driving to a close location like Santa Barbara is very appealing, so staff has built that into our TOT revenue projection. Sales tax, on the other hand, will recover. All signs point to that, but it will be a much slower, steady recovery over the course of a few fiscal years. Again, many businesses continue to be hit hard from COVID, and so they'll take some time to recover. Staff have included a full expenditure projection in the proposed budget. Again, a majority of the city's expenditures pay for staff, both the salaries and fringe benefits, including pension costs, which continue to rise during the forecast period, during the budget period, and also non-salary expenses like contracts and supplies and materials and construction costs. Those costs continue to increase as well, so we continue to have our pressures on the expenditure side. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a very high-level overview of the major revenue sources in the general fund, and the pie chart shows you the proportional share of those major sources. Again, the largest sources of revenue in the city's general fund continue to be sales tax. Both are normal Bradley Burns sales tax at 1% in fiscal year '22, that's coming in at $22.6 million, but then also our Measure C district sales tax, that's just over $23 million. Property tax continues to grow very steadily and has not been significantly impacted due to COVID, so growth is still anticipated in property tax at over $42 million. And then you can see some of the other major revenue sources in the general fund here as well. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the major categories of expenditures in the city's general fund. Again, as it comes as no surprise, the majority of the city's expenditures pay for staff, pays for the staff that delivers services to the community, just around 68% of the total general fund budget. And you can see some of the smaller areas that are funded through the general fund, supplies and services. Capital is a significant piece of the pie, and that's primarily funding directly from the Measure C district sales tax. It is solely dedicated to capital maintenance and improvements and investment in our capital infrastructure citywide. Next slide, please. I mentioned earlier that due to the projected structural deficit that staff has been projecting in the multi-year forecast, similar to a significant portion of the solution to solving the current fiscal year budget problem, staff are projecting to implement a number of departmental budget reductions in the current fiscal year, I'm sorry, in next fiscal year, fiscal year 2022. The total expenditure reductions in all departments in the general fund totals around $6.3 million. It's a significant reduction to the totals citywide general fund budget. There are multiple ways in which departments are proposing to achieve savings, and that will be presented to the City Council during many of the budget presentations in the coming weeks. But a very significant portion of that savings is coming from holding positions vacant. That's a similar strategy that was implemented in the current fiscal year. In total, there are 26 positions across many departments that are planned to be held vacant in order to achieve salary savings. As far as labor concessions, what's included in the fiscal year '22 proposed budget is only any approved cost-of-living adjustments for the city's bargaining units have been included. There are no additional labor cost-of-living adjustments that have been incorporated into the recommended budget. And then, as I mentioned earlier, in order to balance the budget at the end of the day in fiscal year '22 and '23, it does require a very minimal but strategic use of reserves that we continue to have available in order to see us through this economic difficult time. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a very high-level overview of the general fund capital priorities. Again, the majority of the city's general fund capital is funded through the Measure C district sales tax, again, just over $23.7 million. The pie chart on the right shows you where that $23.7 million is proposed to be allocated in fiscal year '22. As in prior years, a vast majority of that continues to go towards maintaining the city's street infrastructure. But as you can see, it crosses multiple levels and multiple disciplines for funding allocations. The general fund does contribute around $800,000, is projected to do so in fiscal year '22, and there are a few projects supporting the fire department and the library with some system improvements, as well as the Eastside Neighborhood Park and some phone and voicemail upgrade projects that will benefit citywide department staff. Next slide, please. This slide here shows you, after we've taken into consideration, all of the revenue sources and the expenditures that are being projected in the next two fiscal years, what impact that will have on the city's general fund reserves. And so the red line here shows you what the policy target should be based on City Council resolution that was adopted, requiring that 10% of the annual operating expenditures are dedicated towards contingency reserves, and 15% of annual operating expenditures are dedicated to disaster reserves totaling 25%. That's what that red line represents. And as you can see, the years following the Great Recession, where we had to dip into our reserves to balance the budget, the City Council had prioritized steadily replenishing those reserves over the course of seven years and was able to actually meet the reserve policy the past few years prior to COVID hitting. But as you can see, that policy line continues to grow as our expenditures grow, but our reserve balance has been declining because of our need to dip into them. And that gap is fairly wide. It was wider than what the city experienced during the Great Recession. Again, as I mentioned earlier, President Biden's rescue package that was recently put into law, and the relief money, the rescue money that the city will be receiving to recover some of its revenue loss, will surely help with our reserve position. And again, that will be a conversation staff will have, starting with the Finance Committee next week, and then eventually with the City Council during our budget conversations with you. Next slide, please. So next, I'll just provide a very high-level overview of what to expect in regards to the city's enterprise and internal service funds. Next slide, please. The list on the left provides just a list of all the enterprise funds that the city has. Again, we went over this in a little bit of high-level detail during the work session we had back in February. The list on the right provides a list of the internal service funds that the city has as well. And similar to the general fund, staff will present very high-level assumptions and forecasts for both revenues and expenditures, what implications that might have on the reserves in all of those funds, many of the capital improvement program and programs and priorities, any fee changes that there may be. Staff will present any impacts in regards to COVID that some of these enterprise funds might be experiencing, particularly the waterfront and downtown parking, and then also any priority projects or in budget reductions that they have incorporated into their budget proposals. So over the course of the next two months, staff will be presenting this information to you at various times, and we'll welcome your feedback. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to provide a listing of all of the dates that staff will be presenting budget information to both the Finance Committee and the City Council. Next slide, please. So earlier today, staff just made a very high-level presentation announcing that the budget was being adopted and gather any feedback. That meeting has already occurred. Today, we are with you this afternoon to provide a very high-level overview of the proposed budget for fiscal year '22 and '23. The items denoted in red are presentations that staff will be making to the Finance Committee, beginning at 12:00. They took an action today to have their meeting start at 12:00 to ensure that there's ample time for public discussion. We will begin departmental budget presentations with the City Council, starting on May 3rd, beginning with the library and the airport. Next slide, please. Budget sessions will continue with the City Council on May 5th, 7th, and 10th, and you can see the departments that will be delivering presentations to you at that time. Next slide, please. And then again, on May 19th, 20th, and 26th, again, you can see that there are a number of departments that will be prepared to present their budget proposals to you as well and gain your feedback. Next slide, please. And then finally, on June 9th, in the evening, the Finance Committee's budget recommendations will be delivered to the City Council, and then City Council can begin their deliberations on the recommended budget, and then provide your final direction to staff to move forward. On June 15th, there'll be a Proposition 218 hearing on the proposed fee changes, and then the schedule is to have the City Council adopt the budget on June 22nd. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you this afternoon is to receive the recommended two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2022 and 2023, including the recommended operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2022, and also hear a report from staff in connection with the filing of the recommended two-year financial plan, and approve of the proposed schedule of City Council budget review meetings and public hearings. And that concludes my presentation. I just want to say that I want to thank the dozens and dozens of staff that have been involved in the budget process over the past many months. They've spent countless hours and have done a great deal of analysis in another very challenging budget year for the city, and I have a lot of respect and admiration for the staff that have been involved. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I'll add that you did all this budget work under the stress of pandemic, Mr. DiMartini, so I'm grateful to all the staff too. But come back, because I think Mr. Friedman has a question for you. I have one too, but go ahead, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini and Madam Mayor, and our entire staff. This is a very stressful time of year. There's a lot going on with the pandemic. I just have one question, because I'm going to have a lot of questions over the coming weeks for you, so don't need to put them all out there now. But what is the total budget of the entire organization? We have, in this, it's $168 million approximately for general fund, but just overall, what is the total? I believe last year was $292 million or something like that, but just so the public knows, when you factor in all the enterprise funds. And that's the only question I have. And if we don't have it now, we can get it later.
Like a quiz.
No problem, I know. It's just over $300 million citywide. I'm going to that, there's a summary schedule on the front page, which I'm trying to find, but it's just over $300 million citywide for fiscal year 2022.
And thank you. That's it. I just wanted to give a breadth of everything we do, because we focus a lot on the general fund up here, but we do so much more than just the general fund. So thank you, Mr. DiMartini.
My question would be on Slide 14. Whenever it says "other," I'm like, what's in there? So it was other revenue, and it looked like a big-ish number, Ms. Hamilton or Mr. Hamilton? Other revenues at 45.4. Is that the utility users' tax and some of those other tax revenues? Mr. DiMartini?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for asking that question. I also questioned the other line items in tables as well. So yes, that line is primarily made up of some of the, it's actually not the other taxes, the user utility tax line item is in that other taxes line, the $12.6 million number in fiscal year 2022. The other revenues number is primarily made up of, the largest piece is departmental revenues. So departments like Parks and Recreation and Police, where they generate their own revenue for various programs that they may offer, that's where that revenue is recorded. Other revenue lines in that item include investment income. So on the income that we realize from the investments that the city makes, it's recorded in that grouping as well. And there are a number of other sort of smaller one-off revenue sources that are also included in that grouping as well.
Right. And then, just to let the public know, the city makes very, very conservative investments. By law, we can't really do anything too radical with our money, with your money. So I don't see any other questions. Let's ask our clerk if people are raising their hands in the GoToWebinar audience. Mr. Stowe?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We presently have two commenters for this item, Anna Marie Gott and Lee Heller. And Anna Marie, you have been unmuted, and you may begin your comment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. So in the last discussion that we had earlier regarding safety, a lot was said about, you know, funding and reprioritizing where money goes. I'd like to give you some ideas about how to collect some funding. Do you know that there are a lot of fees that are uncollected, and that's associated with projects that have gone, you know, partially through the system? Why aren't we collecting those fees? I recently looked at a project, and fees from 2019 were still uncollected, and it was flagged in a Sella, but obviously, you know, no one has done anything to collect the fees, so I'm asking why? Because that can help your bottom line. Did you know that staff actually gives ministerial approval, and they're supposed to be collecting fees, and sometimes they do not collect the fees, and they don't actually collect the documents such as design files, so we can even see what was approved? Transfer of ownership for that cannabis permit that you guys, you know, just heard about? Well, did you know that I sent an email to Matt for? I think there actually is a problem, because they expanded their footprint, and they don't seem to have, you know... uh their uh their footprint and they don't seem to have, you know, this updated and um parking that they actually won the contract with. So I'm not sure that they actually should still have that permit, and did you know you can revoke it? Um why don't we have a transfer of ownership ordinance for cannabis? Did you just see that that what was it called? Glass door or glass house down in Carpinteria? Just sold for five hundred million dollars? You cannot tell me that some of these cannabis uh permits are not going to be sold or people aren't going to merge with and have an IPO. The city should be profiting. Every time a parking requirement is not met and we go ahead and we allow someone to reduce their parking requirement, we don't collect fees, except for a tiny fee, but not a long-term fee that is commensurate with the actual parking uh space, which is tens of thousands of dollars that we could actually be ca- be keeping and using for another purpose. What about all of the illegal short-term vacation rentals that could be used for housing and all of the taxes that we have not actually collected? We don't have anybody really focusing on this, and what we do have is glacial glacial change and glacial.
Think, thanks. Actually, that's those are good suggestions. Let's let's collect on fees or other areas if we're not if we're not finding some money. So thanks. Um another speaker? Mr. Stout?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Uh presently, there are no other speakers uh indicated for this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and it looks like we need to receive this. We've heard our um we've heard our report, and then we approve the schedule. Uh Mr. Friedman, comments or a emotion? Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick again, want to want to thank all the staff and all the departments for putting together this budget under the challenges of of COVID and for doing the actual work. We're having to hold a lot of positions vacant, as we've seen. And so uh we're gonna have a lot of questions from council, from finance over the coming uh month. And I look forward to having those discussions on our our budget priorities. And so with that, I'll 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 move the staff recommendation.
I'll I'll go ahead and second it and add thanks to the finance committee, which um this is your busiest time of year. And so thanks for all the uh work, thanks in advance for all the work you're going to be doing, so. Um well, we'll take a a roll call vote then on this uh motion to uh move our to move our budget process forward.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh this is a motion by council member Friedman, seconded by council member, pardon me, seconded by Mayor Mario for the staff recommendation. Council member Snedden.
Yeah.
Council member Friedman.
Yes.
Council member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Oscar Gutierrez.
Aye.
Council member Alejandro Gutierrez.
Yes.
Council member Harmon.
Yes.
Mayor Maria.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you to Mr. DiMartini and all the budget staff and all the department heads and all the uh business managers and everyone who put this together. And it's not entirely good news on the budget, but thank goodness that we had a reserve and we were able to uh use those um emergency funds, exactly what they were set aside for. Mr. Casey, much thanks to you and your and your staff, sir. Closing that item, we moved